Hi. Sorry, I just noticed the times. We will call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Oakland Board of Education. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. A schedule of regular meetings was adopted at our reorganization meeting on January 2nd. The schedule of those meetings has been posted. And they're listed here in the retrospect, the Courier-Post, and with the Clerk of the Borough of Oakland, and they are also on our website. Now for a roll call.
Mrs. Vopel?
Here.
Mr. Stotts?
Here.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Here.
Mr. Tady?
Here.
Mrs. Marmian?
Here.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mrs. Bushko?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is no executive session at this time, so we're going to move on to Section 3, which is the Committee of the Whole. Is there a motion to move to the Committee of the Whole?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are now on the Committee of the Whole. The first topic we have tonight is the Board's Self-Evaluation Report that we all completed in November, December. Beth Ann has posted the report here in our administrative content. She's going to just review some of the highlights for us.
All right. So I'm just going to go over the areas that you guys ranked yourself and then your average score, and then some of the comments, because some of the comments you guys made were really great. So you could rank yourself anywhere from 1, meaning this area is not important to me, to 4, meaning it's like vital. So in the area of planning, the Board as a whole, you gave yourselves an average of a 3.7. In the area of policy, an average of 3.6. Student achievement of 4.0. Finance, a 3.9. Board operations, a 3.6. Board performance, 3.4. Board and superintendent relationships, 3.3. Board and staff relationships, a 3.3. Board and community, 3.4. And now under each area, I'm just going to read some of the great comments that you guys wrote. So under the area of planning, it was noted by a few Board members that as a Board, we haven't set goals in a long time, excuse me, and that our planning really isn't as robust as it should be. And that would seem to be a theme going throughout. So just a note as we go into the new year, now that we've just reorganized a new year fiscally, but not school, but you know what I mean. And then if somebody made a comment that it's really great that the committee chairs make it a point to give all the other committees an update on what's going on. In policy, it was noted, obviously, that we review policies at every Board meeting and that a couple people would like to have more familiarity with Board policy. Regarding student achievement, although we do provide the mandatory state testing reports as required with the state deadlines, it was noted that it'd be helpful to see other progress reports throughout the school year that maybe teachers collected on their children, and if it would be possible to incorporate some of the data that we're getting from the middle school and high school, because the Oakland students obviously attend there as well. Regarding finance, just a big concern, you know, obviously with budgeting and state finance, which really is out of our control, but just the general theme of communicating with each other as a Board, and with regards to the budget, that that committee communicates any questions or concerns about the budget with the administrative staff. Board operations, this is how you operate together. There are some comments about that you guys communicate well with each other, but in some areas, the way the Board and the admin communicate back and forth with each other could use some improvement. It was noted that maybe more members should attend the New Jersey School Board Workshop in October, because some of our members have taken away a lot of really good experience at the PDs there. PD meaning professional development. Board performance, you guys all gave each other pats on the back for showing up to all the committee meetings and Board meetings, and that everybody's well-prepared with questions. Board superintendent relationships, it was just noted, obviously, we have a shared relationship, so Oakland really doesn't evaluate the superintendent per se, but it might be an area of focus that they could, you know, maybe talk to Collinswood or have more participation. Board staff relationships, they commented how Mrs. Bolden does a really good job connecting our Board with personnel, and that the PTO president does an excellent job as well. Board and community, you've noted that you guys have made some really great strides in communicating with your overall community, just not parents, and that there's more to the Oakland community than just the parents, it's other people out there, but there's more work to be done, and just, you know, you guys would like to see more participation from the broader community at your Board meetings. And then the overall theme, the final question the Board evaluation did ask was what you guys saw as your three highest or three major challenges that you're currently facing. And no surprise, it's been consistent pretty much. It's funding, 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 funding. That was pretty much everybody's number one. And number two being meeting the social and emotional needs of our kids, as well as the impact of COVID still on some of the children in the district. And then the last question was, in maintaining appropriate role as a policymaking Board through effective oversight, what specific areas of Board governance require additional focus? Overall, that came in as community relations, engagement, and goal setting, and effective communication. So the theme was pretty consistent throughout the entire evaluation, and those are all areas, I think, that we've all talked about in committee that we could use work on, or we always brainstorm on how to get more people to come to the Board meetings and how better to communicate amongst ourselves. So it's pretty consistent. But again, the entire document is in the administrative section, and it is available. In addition, I just, piggybacking on this, at the last, I feel like I'm echoing, at the last committee meetings, it was asked to provide an update on the tech information. It was this time last year that we had a presentation on our tech department. So under my section of the finance, Buildings and Grounds, in the administrative section, I did update you, but I can just read it out loud for the folks at home. So so far this year, in Oakland, we've replaced both of the nurses' devices, we replaced the main office, sec secretaries, desktop with a laptop, we swapped out all four copiers. We're looking to get rid of your old lunch register, very hard to come by, by the way. We're working to order 23 interactive boards to replace your outdated projectors that are in the schools. We're working on getting quotes to replace the staff devices for next year. We got that extra state D this year, so I want to see if I can replace the staff devices. And then both school districts moved over to a new phone system under the same server, so it allows much easier for us to talk between the two districts. As of today, there are only 16 open tickets. Last year, there were 245 created and 215 were solved. Yeah, and that was it. And then I put the data for the last three years, the number of tickets that were created and the number that were solved. But that is the update on the tech department, kind of where we are, as requested.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Are there any comments or questions from Board members on either the Board's self-evaluation or the tech updates?
Yeah, I just have a question for the Board. How do we want to move forward? I thought there were some really great comments and great progress, especially in goal setting. Would love to hear, you know, the administrative side of it, too. Is it a retreat function? Is it a, you know, what do we think?
It's a great question. I don't know if I have an answer yet.
Yeah, because I feel like, I mean, I've been here since, it's been 10 years. And then Collinswood longer, but I feel like that's something all Boards struggle in. It's how to, you work the committees so all the voices can be heard, and everybody has a view, and, you know, sometimes we disagree, but, you know, that's kind of where we get a bulk of our vetting done. And then communicating back out to the rest of the Board, that is hard, and I know both Boards have struggled with this, and I know you guys are doing a good job of reporting out. Yeah, I don't...
If I may, I mean, we're very agenda-driven, so we have limited time. Obviously, everybody's volunteering their time in administration as well, and, you know, we have point, 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 get through these points. Doesn't leave any time for brainstorming. I would love to see, I don't know if it's an hour, two hours, where we can, you know, it's kind of a free discussion of some of these things, maybe structured by some kind of, you know, these were the top two or top three things that we thought we needed to work on, let's sit together and talk about them and come up with some solutions and timelines, expectations, you know, things like that. Because otherwise, this is very nice that we did it, and it kind of goes nowhere.
Right, but just file it and not do anything. So like a little, like a mini-retreat?
That's what I was going to recommend, like, instead of occupying like a full or a half day, maybe you do like two, three, or four smaller sessions, 90 to 120 minutes, based on a specific set of topics, and that way, it's not so painful at one time, and then we can actually get to, this is the issue we're trying to solve for, this is what we want to do, these are the measures that we're going to determine whether or not it's successful, and here's our next step. And then that's the structure, and we walk away with something very tangible that you want to see.
Some action stuff. Yeah, I mean, even if we structured it by the committees, like finance brainstorming, community relations and policy brainstorming, curriculum brainstorming, something like that.
Maybe we can give each other homework, because I'm pretty sure, I'm 90% sure. School Boards, I think a lot of those presentations are posted on their website, right?
I think, yeah.
I feel like we can do homework, like if we want to talk communication, we can probably search their agenda by that topic and maybe get some information, you know what I mean?
But, I mean, just to piggyback, when we say, when we get together to think about the issue to solve, I almost think it's better to, ahead of time, communicate what the issue is so you can come prepared. Because if we spent, so say it's 90 minutes, 45 of that'll be like, what do we need to fix? It'd be better to go in at minute one, ready to fix what we've digested might need to be fixed, and that kind of maximize the time spent as well.
Absolutely. I think to your point, too, that's where the committee meetings can be very beneficial, where we can kind of maybe map it out, lay the foundation in our respective committee meetings, and then, you know, have that agenda, so to speak, for the, you know, Board retreats so we know going in, hey, these are the topics we're talking about, we can come in with solutions, suggestions. You know, and I don't even mind spearheading with, you know, personnel and curriculum on that committee, because those items are usually pretty quick, and, you know, we kind of breeze through that, so if we needed to devote a little more time, even in that particular committee, I don't mind, you know, changing the direction if need be at all. But I think committee is where we start and build from there.
And just maybe, as we go into, I guess, February, our next set of committees, like, if we wanted to do the little mini-retreat, like something, let's say, when we're talking policy, you want to talk about communication, when might you want to do this 90 to 120-minute session that Dr. McDowell talked about? Did you want to do it on a Saturday, or like, you want to do it after a Board meeting, and stay for another hour, hour and a half? Like, I know everybody's tired at the end of the day, but when might be the best time for you guys to do that? Because everybody works and has different schedules and stuff. So kind of process that and let me know, too.
I mean, we don't have to decide now, but, I mean, I wouldn't mind if we prolonged it an evening meeting to, you know, like, if we can figure this out in committee...
This is my night for this.
Yeah.
That's when I know that I'm not going to say, oh, I have a doctor's appointment after Board meetings.
Exactly.
There's not going to be something else after this.
So, yeah, if it meant staying, you know, after the public session for, you know, a little longer.
That's my preference.
That's also my preference as well.
I'm on board for that, yeah.
Rather than a different day. Yeah, yeah. That's your schedule.
As long as Beth Ann still provides coffee.
The only thing I would add to that, you know, we do have supports through NJ School Boards, so, you know, to have somebody come in from the organization to help facilitate, help do some planning, I think that would be really, we haven't done anything like that since I've been on the Board, but I think, I've been on the other side of the table and seen it done, and it's been quite helpful. Over the years, we've had folks from school Boards actually kind of help facilitate district improvement plans, different things like that. So it's a resource we have that we haven't necessarily tapped, that may or may not impact when we do it. I don't know if they send folks out on a late weeknight, but it might be a good resource to help us get started.
That's a great idea. Thank you. Thank you all for that. So to be continued, I think, but that's some good starting, and maybe in February, we can start.
You know what, I'm sorry. How about in February, I add to like, all of the committees under admin content, just like the no, evaluation starters, or like, topic, question mark, and then if all the committees can agree on what you want to start with. That way, at least we remember to talk about it in February.
And as committee chair, I will scour this and try to pull out, because there were some really good suggestions. I honestly, I did it so long ago, I don't even remember what I put in there, you know, and it's, you know, the ones that are relevant to my committee, I'd be happy to kind of bring to the table and help us come up with an agenda. Maybe it's like two to three items that we want to focus on for each one, I don't know.
And the areas of focus that we would pick would be based on our committee's focus? Is that what we would do during committee meeting, or would it be broader?
I think both, yeah. I think both. I think for the committee chairs to come up with things, but if there's other things that you want to discuss, everything about...
Yeah.
It might be good if every, maybe committee, like, if we pick a certain, if it's like community engagement, and kind of maybe make that the focus of each committee.
Okay.
And the committee chairs, we can kind of spearhead that. Because I think that's an excellent starting point, because obviously, our priorities and concerns as a Board should be what the community's priorities and concerns are, so maybe, you know, if we say community engagement, and then committee chairs, we can spearhead that discussion at February committee.
Yeah, that's a great point. One of the things, just generally, that I would love just continuing improvement on is communication, both within each other, with administration, with the community at whole. So in light of that, just in the interest of transparency, I will tell you that there was discussion today about moving today's meeting to remote, so there was some back and forth about that. I was resistant. It's, I prefer seeing you all in person. I'm not as comfortable with Google Meets, for sure. But, so we did go back and forth about that. In the end, it seemed like it was too late to make a change, but just want to be clear that that was something that was discussed because of the weather today. There's not a state of emergency today? Am I correct about that? Like, there was last week when we switched to remote for committee meetings, but just wanted to be upfront about that. One other thing that I wanted to mention, gosh, I had a note somewhere, hold on. We'll wait. I'm sorry. No, I wanted to bring up, Bill had something that he wanted to discuss during Committee of the Whole, and I was trying to remember what it was. So you had a question about something on the finance report about gas, so I wanted to make sure that we got to that, because I did make a note to bring that up tonight as well.
Correct. There were two checks on there for supply of gas, and I don't remember who they were, but one of them is supply, and the other check was for the transmission. Do we ever check to see if it's cheaper to buy gas and have it supplied by the same firm, as opposed to doing it this way?
Yes. Every three years, ACES, so ACES is the Alliance for Competitive Energy Services, and it's a program run through New Jersey School Boards Association. So it's one of like the largest shared services in the state, but they go out to bid for about 550 school districts, where they bid your gas and electric. They went out in 2022, and then again in April of 2023, and it was recommended that, and they do it by area, so in our area, they recommended that to get the lower tariffs to, for it to be cheaper, that we go with, we pay two separate providers. And in years past, I have had people come into the Board office to say, oh, we can save you money, we'll go through your energy bills, and be like, and then if we can save you money, you can switch to our company, but they can never beat the ACES prices. But the reason, and we've been doing it for a couple of years now, both Collinswood and Oakland, it's actually cheaper to break out, so we pay your supplier one, and the person who delivers it, like, two different bills, as opposed to all of it coming in on PSENG under one bill. But that's, we're in ACES, and that's, we kind of have to do it that way, but we are getting the cheapest price out there, and that's to keep us from having to pay high tariffs.
How do we know we're getting the cheapest price? Because ACES tells us that?
Correct. I mean, they bid our service for us.
Okay.
If you want me to cancel it and pay higher, I'd be, I would not recommend that, but that's the whole point in joining the shared service. They take every school, they take our accounts for the last year for PSENG, and they put everybody's bids on the street, and this bid went on the street last year. Okay?
Okay. Now, I'm all in favor of paying more to somebody else. Now, obviously, I'm not. I just want to know that ACES, the idea of group buying is to reduce the price, and I may be absolutely correct.
Correct.
But I'd like to know that public service can't supply gas to us cheaper than ACES can. ACES is doing it for 500 districts in the state.
That's correct. Successfully, is my understanding.
There's probably some winners and losers in there. I don't want to be one of the losers. And I'd like to, I'd like to check on ACES. You know, it's nice that ACES is doing that, but can we go to public service and say, look, this was our gas usage for the last year? What would you have charged us to provide that?
I don't know they've ever done that. I don't even know the process for a school district to ask a public utility to bid on my work. So I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. Because I think for 30 years, we've always had ACES in Oakland, so I honestly don't know the answer to the question.
The answer to your question might be...
What?
Well, I guess you have to go to public bid. I don't know, maybe you're...
And that's why I don't know the answer, because like, everybody, like, you're kind, if you live in this area, you're kind of stuck with PSENG, and the only way to make them cheaper is to bid out the source, and that's what ACES does. So they say, okay, you're, here's your supplier, and then here's your, whatever, the delivery person, which is PSENG. So we pay cheaper on this one, because we're kind of like, yeah, we're kind of like, in certain parts of Cherry Hill, like, it's broken out, like, PSENG is electric, and then South Jersey Gas is gas. It's like very territorial, so I don't even, I mean, just being completely honest, I don't even know how we would do that, which is why, like, we like, let them bid it for us, and get us the lower tariffs where they can, which, and they'll come in and they'll say, we recommend you, you pay this person for this and this person for that, and get separate bills to make them do it cheaper.
But then we have two people making a profit. You have the supplier, and you have the transmission company, who are both making a profit. I'm not convinced that's cheaper. And apparently, we don't have any way of telling whether it's cheaper or not. In theory, it is, but in practice, I don't know whether it is or not.
Can I make a suggestion that the School Board Association has a message board? I guess is the best way to describe it.
I think there's a link on their website for ACES, and has all the information on it.
Yeah, and people use it, and they'll put up questions like that. I would suggest maybe posing that, and see if other districts have gone down that rabbit hole, to see if it saved any money.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I have no expertise in that area. Does anyone else have anything for Committee of the Whole? One thing, last thing I just want to bring up, obviously, with the weather this morning, we had a two-hour delay. The notice did go out pretty late, and I know that, I'm sorry? Okay. And I know that there was a follow-up communication about that, but if you want, I was just wondering if Dr. McDowell could address that at all, and what that might look like in the future.
And so, we, again, want to just publicly apologize for the late notice to our families. That was never our intent. There was a breakdown in communication coming out of my office, and we are working diligently to correct that. And so, in the future, in the near, near future, we will make sure that notice falls under two categories, either the night before, or the early morning of. And so generally, what families would expect is sometime around 8:00, 8:15, is to receive a notice of either a delay or a closure, or something that's impacting the traditional schedule. If that is not possible, we're committed to a 5:30 or a 5:45 a.m. notification for families before they start their day. And so, we're working to also put all of this on, all in our district website, so that if families miss the calls, miss the texts, miss the emails, there's a single place that they can go to that will also have that information perpetually. So that's what we're working on today. And I will prematurely note, based on the refreeze, based on our ability to clear sidewalks, steps, and compete against black ice from a safety perspective, it is highly likely that we will be announcing and sending out notice shortly of a two-hour delay for tomorrow in order to keep students and staff safe who are traveling to and from.
Thank you very much for that.
I believe Gloucester County Schools, many of them already called that, too, so I don't think...
About a dozen have already called it.
I do appreciate also putting it on the website as well. I've heard from my kids, at least two kids, that missed the announcement today, went to school on time, but fortunately, they got there safely. But I think whatever ways we can get the information out, as early as we can get out, is really important, but particularly for people who might not be, for whatever reason, getting the messages, that it's available on the website. For even people in the community, if they're curious, if they don't have kids, and they can see it posted somewhere that there is a delay, grandparents, whatever, you know, someone else is responsible for taking kids to school. So I think that's great, so thank you for that improvement.
Yeah, this can't happen again. I mean, it's, there's not much reason, Fred, you might have to get up at 4:00 in the morning. When I first got on the Board, the superintendent we had did that. He got up 4:00 in the morning, he called the National Weather Service, he called the Police Department, he called the surrounding districts, he did all of this, and the notice went out quickly. At 7:00, for a school that normally opens at 7:50, that's just not even close.
We get it, we acknowledge that, but we also acknowledge it's not 40 years ago, and so the level of communication is a bit different, and we're coordinating with a much larger number of people. So we're not just coordinating at the school level with parents, we're also coordinating with local law enforcement, we're coordinating with other school districts that we connect to, bus, transportation, food service, and so there's a lot of moving parts. We are committed to making sure that we don't have that happen again.
I hope not.
Are there ways we can partner with municipal, whatever that is, code red? So I got like two phone calls within a minute and a half of each other yesterday that my recycling would be on time. I mean, if it...
He had a technical issue.
All right. It'll be out. And it was still outside around 10:00 a.m., which is not, but I mean, exactly. So, I mean, I don't know if that's a thing, or I don't know what that expense is to send out a town-wide, even one phone call like that, but maybe to kind of lean on them as partners, because I think a lot of us got that phone call.
So I actually have a question about this, because I think we used to have like a phone, like an automated phone call, too, that went out in addition to text and email, but I know that phone systems have switched, is that still possible to do an automated phone call as well? Okay. All right.
Yeah, it's something to do with Thrill Share and Genesis, and, yeah, we're figuring that out.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Anyone else, anything?
Just in light of this whole discussion, too, it can get lost, a thank you to Keith Higginbottom and the Buildings and Grounds, because they were working hard in getting all the buildings ready, so, you know, in spite of maybe some communication issues, still kudos to our Buildings and Grounds for working hard at all the buildings.
Absolutely. I also want to give a shout-out to Oakland Public Works as well, because our roads are really nice. They do a phenomenal job every time, so really want to thank them as well. Okay, is there a motion to come out of Committee of the Whole?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are now out of Committee of the Whole, moving on to Section 4, future dates, miscellaneous information. Tomorrow, there's a PTA Family Fund Skate Night at Hot Wheels. There's a book fair coming up, Picture Retake Day, PTA Blood Drive coming up at the end of this month as well, and the next PTA meeting is in early February. There will be schools closed in February for staff PLD, as well as President's Day, and... and our next meeting is not on there, but I can tell you the next board meeting will be on February 20th. Okay, moving on to section five, routine board, board business. Is there an approval of, approval to, for the minutes from the regular board meeting on December 19th, as well as the reorganization meeting on January 2nd? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do you all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to section six, this is the first public comment section. If you have something to say for the items on the agenda, please stand, state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. Once again, this is for items on the agenda only. All right, hearing none. Moving on to section seven. The superintendent's report, Dr. McDowell.
Good evening again. Section 7.01 is the enrollment report, which is attached. December of '22, enrollment was 275. December of 2023, it's 269. 7.02 and 7.03 are the safety drill and suspension report, and there is no anti-bullying report at this time.
All right. Perfect. Thank you. Moving on to section eight, this is the business administrative report.
All right. 8.01 are your December 2023 monthly transfers. 8.02 is all of your financial statements, including your secretary and treasurer's report and your cash flow report. And 8.03 is the listing of the purchase orders issued in the month of January. And 8.04 is the listing of the warrants to be paid tomorrow pending approval. And if, okay, I'm going to roll right into section nine on behalf of Mr. McMillan, who's not here. All right. Items 9.01 through 9.06 are those items that I just mentioned. 9.07 is the shared service agreement with the Collingswood Board of Ed for our technology services, and that's for the next school year, 2425. 9.08 is the shared child study team services agreement with Collingswood, again, for next school year, 2425. I owe you guys two more shared service agreements, so that both school districts know what they're budgeting, and I am working on those. So, with that, items 9.01 through 9.08.
Great. Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. On a roll call.
Mrs. Vappel?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Butchko?
Yes.
All right. Section 10, this is Curriculum and Personnel Committee.
All right, so item 10.01, we're seeking approval for a new contract issued to Suzanne Woolslayer, horizontal advancement on the scale from masters to masters plus 30. So, you see her new salary listed there. Item 10.02, we're seeking approval for a new club, for 2324 Dungeons and Dragons After-School Club, headed by Suzanne Woolslayer, and you see the amount there. Item 10.03, we're looking approval, for approval for the following substitutes there that are listed. We have no travel expenses at this time, so we are seeking approval on items 10.01 through 10.03.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. On a roll call.
Mrs. Vappel?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Butchko?
Yes.
All right. Section 11, this is the School Community Relations and Policy Committee. Therese?
Item 11.01 is the report from Collingswood. Mr. Tabey?
Thank you. Just a few updates, since we haven't had our January board meeting yet. 2024-25 reorganization meeting took place on January 3rd. The next round of committee meetings will take place tomorrow on the 17th. I'll be representing us on the curriculum committee. The next Board of Ed, Board of Ed meeting will take place on Monday, January 22nd. Earlier start time though, 5:00 p.m. start time, which was switched from the 6:30 p.m. start time to accommodate an executive session. And just to piggyback off of our committee of the whole conversation, Collingswood Board is planning a, some type of winter retreat, and dates and topics are currently being finalized. So, once I have more on that, I'll share with everyone. I did send out via email the Collingswood Board of Ed meeting and committee dates, just so you have them, along with the committee assignments. And that's it for Collingswood.
Quick question for you, Rich. Was Collingswood looking for a joint retreat or just their own?
I believe it's just their own.
I think it's important, based on the nuance, Oakland is really going to need some, some time for Oakland.
But if I may, I, I think what is, when we've had joint retreats in the past, we've done Oakland, and then a little time together, and then Collingswood, and I'd love, I'd love the idea that we have, and maybe once we've gotten through that, we could have something that is just joint. Summer, something like that, I don't know. Just an idea. Item 11.02 is the PTA liaison report. Mrs. Rotondo?
Hey, everybody. So, I, they moved it from Tuesday, when we typically do committee, to Wednesday, and I was not in attendance, but I spoke to Lila, and she was able to give me some updates. So, I think they kicked it off with the treasurer's report. There was a lot of activity in December, and they reviewed all of that with the Dine and Donate Blue Monkey, the Candygrams, Candygrams, and the Holiday Shop being really, really successful. Lila didn't have any updates on membership. Let's see, Ms. Bolden had an administrative update to the PTA, where she also went through the December events. There was a lot of work done by the room ambassadors. There's, it's a party month, and it's not always easy to, not only do they help with the party, but they find other parents to help with various aspects of making sure that it's fun for the kids, and that everybody's being looked after, so they do a lot of work with that. Ms. Bolden also went over that there were the parent conferences, they wrapped up, the pajama day funds did go to the Police Department, they had the band and choir concert, which was really cute. There was the announcement of Teacher of the Year, which I won't review now, because I think that's going to be a bigger topic in a future board meeting, so not to minimize that for someone special. And then there was a review of upcoming events, some of them that were listed in section four, so I don't want to be redundant. Blood Drive was mentioned, Little League registrations open, there's a Collingswood Winter Library event. Moving on, the Board of Education update, which should have been provided by me, was provided offline to Lila by me, and she went over just some activities from our prior meeting, which you were all at. Again, kind of a recap of some of the past events, and then the upcoming events that again, I think were mentioned in section four, is the Hot Wheels Night, there's the Book Fair, that's going to be kicking off, pre-K and kindergarten family fund night that I think is going to be led by either Miss Shudo, or she's overseeing that, and a new spirit wear design is ready, it will be released soon, and there's a pretzel sale coming up. Therese, I'll let you speak to the talent show piece of it, because you're the head of that committee, I believe. And a lot going on as we approach fifth grade promotion. So, the Candygrams that just passed, there will be a Dine and Donate Mulligans on March 4th, there will be other fundraisers associated with that, cheesecake, wildflowers, seed bombs. Yep. A blue and gold night, a skate night, swim and bowling, just to get the fifth graders ready for middle school, kind of kick them off with a bang. And other than that, there's some more dates for the third time in this recap, so I think we know what's coming up. Therese, if you want to speak about the talent show, since I think that's, the dates are newly announced?
Right. So, I'll just say, I mean, this is a wonderful, it's the second year that we're back in person after doing a couple of virtual talent shows, but I feel privileged to be part of it, along with a number of other really amazing volunteers. It's March 1st, so save the date. Board members would love to see you there, because not only are the Oakland students shining, but the faculty and staff actually get in on the act. The theme is friends will be there for you, so expect a lot of cute references that our kids won't get, but we will. So, that's March 1st, 7:00 here in the cafeteria stage, so that is a Friday. Yeah, Friday, March 1st. Thank you very much. It was a robust report. Item 11.03 is the OMSAC report. Mrs. Butchko?
Yeah, so OMSAC hosted a gym night last Friday here in the gym, 43 kids attended. Chaperones have been good this year, because the PTA has been assisting in recruiting, so thank you to the PTA for that. Working on the spring schedule with a possible celebrity gym night on March 22nd, and the next meeting will be in late February. And that's it for OMSAC.
Thank you. Item 11.04 is the Oakland Education Foundation Report, and that would be me. I have been in touch with Kim Love and Sue Divis, the president and vice president of OEF. They're really looking to recruit some new help, and would like to, you know, recalibrate and talk about some kind of event that could be a fundraiser. So, more on that hopefully next month. Item 11.05, policies for the first reading. We have none this month. 11.06 are policies for a second reading that we looked at at our last month's meeting in December. There is no, there are no HIV reports in 11.07, so we are seeking approval for items 11.01 through 11.06.
Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. All, no, roll call. Sorry. Thank you.
No worries. Mrs. Vappel?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Butchko?
Yes.
All right, moving on to section 12. This is the last public comment section. Please stand, state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. Any public comments at this time?
Can I ask a question? The, the broadcasting that we're doing?
Yeah.
Or the podcast, or whatever we're doing?
Yeah.
Do we have any way of knowing how many people are tuning into this?
That's a good question.
More than I thought.
I'm sorry? Four right now. 12 total views.
High to all four of you.
Yeah, thank you for watching.
It's progress.
Then, once, once it is like not live streaming anymore, and then just posted, then you could see the views on YouTube, is that correct? Or the number of views?
Yeah.